Call this meeting to order of the Ellisville Town Council, Monday, February 10th, 2020. Please rise for the pledge. Scott, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, where'd the marshal go? Someone like to lead prayer?
I can do it.
Alright.
Father, as we come here tonight to do the town's business, we pray that you be with all of us as we make good judgments and have sound minds as we move forward on tonight's business. We pray that you be with all of us as we come and go here tonight. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Jeff. Guess I should've looked around before I called the meeting to order. No, that's what I just said. Alright, I guess we need to wait for Sandy here to call roll. Sandy, would you like to call roll?
Dan Swafford?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Alright, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes for executive session and regular meeting on January 27th, 2020. So, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Entertain a motion to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Alright, Parks and Rec. Jimmy, I guess this is you. Appointment of Shannon Wooton?
I'm just taking counsel vote.
Okay, well then let's vote before... Go ahead.
I'd like to introduce you to Shannon, LaShanna Wooton. Well, Shannon has been very interested in the Parks Board for some time. She's committed a nice resume for us. The Parks Board members that were able to attend last Monday, we're very impressed with her. And we're recommending to you tonight that you vote for Ms. Wooton to be on the Parks Board. It'll give us five full members now, probably the first time in quite a while that we've, yeah, had five full members. So we appreciate your support on that, so.
Hold on, hold on, once you're talking.
Sure.
Alright, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
You made the motion?
I guess I did. I'll make the motion.
I'd like to hear from her first.
Okay.
Alright, I'm LaShanna Wooton. I actually have worked at the Health Department for about five years, and that seems to focus a lot on Bloomington. But I'm an Ellisville townie, so I'm excited to actually do some work for Ellisville rather than just Bloomington. And a lot of my work at the Health Department is very health and wellness focused, so I see a lot of overlap with Parks and Recreation as well.
Great. I think it's wonderful that you're willing to donate the time and help us out. Alright, Sandy, roll call.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
For the record, the reason I like to hear from them first, because they may present and say, "I want to pave over all parks." So, you know, if they do something like that.
I'm LaShanna Wooton, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a member of the Parks and Recreation Board of the town of Ellisville, Indiana, according to the law, and to the best of my skill and ability. Congratulations again.
Alright, congratulations. Alright, moving along. Let's go to Resolution dash zero three, 2020. Final Economic Revitalization Area Resolution. Who is this?
Yeah, I mean, this is just the confirming resolution for the one you passed at the last meeting. Essentially, it provides a tax abatement for the Richland Senior Citizens Housing for 10 years. I can answer any questions on that. I think I saw Carson. Yep, I did. He's here. He can answer any questions as well. Basically, nothing's changed since last meeting.
Okay. Any council comment on this or questions? Any public comment, questions? Carson, would you like to add anything?
No, just appreciate the opportunity for the organization, started back in '67, to be able to continue to grow and provide much-needed housing in Ellisville. That's there's a lot of things growing up in Ellisville I think Ellisville can be very proud of. And Senior Citizen Housing is right up there. It's known throughout Indiana and the Midwest for the job and mission that it does. And town board has always went out of their way to be very supportive of the mission and what we try to do up there. And, you know, it's just been very exemplified just in the last few weeks. We had a fire up there. Mike and his team, as well as Jimmy and his team, came up and just did a wonderful job and comforted the residents. And the partnership that we enjoy with this town and leadership is not taken for granted. And we appreciate all you guys do for us.
Thank you, Carson. Um, I'd entertain a motion.
I made a motion to approve Resolution zero three dash 2020, Final Economic Revitalization Area Resolution. Richland Senior Citizens Housing, 6151 North Matthews Drive, Ellisville.
Second.
Sandy, roll call.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, ordinance on first reading. Ordinance 2020 dash zero one, to annex four parcels belonging to the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation, 8118 West Reeves Road. Kevin?
Alright, um, pretty simply, this was a 100% super voluntary annexation. It was heard plan commission last Thursday night, received a seven to zero favorable recommendation for annexation in the R1 zone. Four parcels are owned by the school and undeveloped. They just want to bring them into town.
Because they're owned by another governmental body, does the zoning really make a difference?
Not really. They can, it's a school, so they can do any zone, but keep it consistent with the rest of their.
No, I just wondered. I want to make sure. Do you need to do something with that?
Any other council comments, questions? Any public comment? Seeing none. This is not a voting item yet, so we will move on down to new business. Request to hire a full-time employee for the Department of Public Works. Mike?
I'll stick to that. Yeah. Month and a half, two months ago, we came to you and asked if we could bring back an employee, Greg Vegas, that we had working for us temporary full-time. He went on to get a full-time job somewhere else and was laid off for the winter. We had a couple openings and some vacations, so we asked to hire him temporarily as a TFT again. And so he's still with us, about to leave to go back to his regular job. We've been talking amongst supervisors about preparing for the construction season. Usually in March, we hire two TFT employees, temporary full-time employees. They work for nine months. And this year, we want to break a tradition. We've been doing it for at least a decade, if not longer, where we hired two TFTs. Street Department hires one, we hire one, sometimes we hire two. And we've been hiring one between us, or one each, for several years now. So, we have a chance to hire Greg, making him a regular full-time employee. He'd work 12 months a year. The two TFTs would work nine months a year, so that's 18 months. But he is an excellent employee. He's local. And we thank to prepare ourselves for the future workforce for the Department of Public Works. We think there's an opportunity to hire him as opposed to two TFTs. And we've done the math. It's payroll neutral, if you will. And, uh, and so that's what we propose to do. And so we come before you to ask permission to hire him.
Any council comments, questions?
I have one.
Yes.
You don't have to hire him right away, correct?
We don't have to, but we would, he is working for us now, and we are paying him.
Okay. Because I would like to table this, because I have a lot of questions since I wasn't around when all this public works stuff came up. And do it like in our work session, discuss a bunch of questions I have.
It's up to the board.
He's working for us now already, either a part-time employee?
He's been laid off. He has a job that's can be seasonal. And he wasn't doing anything. My guy's keeping contact with him. He's a local person. And we had an injury on the job, and we had a couple vacations come up. And in the, in the Christmas, New Year's season, everybody takes a lot of time off anyway. So, we were shorthanded, and we decided it would be a good fit for him to work for us temporarily until the spring came and he got his job back. But as I said, um, we think there's an opportunity here. It's a good fit for our department, and the money's there. And we think this is the best way to move forward. I mean, we, we are, you guys have us put together crews and departments to respond to the town's needs, and we think this is a good fit. And it will work like most other hires that we've had before. You know, I mean, we just think it's a good fit.
I'd like to add that this, that Greg's worked for the town prior to this. He's also worked for the Street Department. Pam, you want to share your thoughts on Greg?
Well, he's a really good employee. I mean, there's no doubt about that. He's dependable, knows a lot about construction and his run equipment. And he would be a very good employee to have.
In the past, we shared in both departments, and as the Department of Public Works formed, he was, he, he was one of our veteran employees just because he's worked in both departments, so he's cross-shipped.
I would have a problem with hiring him, that I would just like to, even if we would hire him, but I still want to bring up in work session, talk about the public works all in itself, because I wasn't around when all this went on. And there's a lot of questions I have about it, like the merger, the merger of the Street Department and all that.
Well, I'm, okay, I'm kind of confused, but.
You mentioned that you hired construction, the construction season, is that what you said?
I did.
So we hire employees for construction season. What, explain that a little bit more to me.
Well, during the good weather, we do pipe jobs, sewer construction.
Well, okay.
We do, one of the things we do, it takes two of our people, three or four months to clean all the sewers in town. So they, they take on that job just as soon as it turns spring and we get our machine out. So that leaves us a little shorthanded. Danny's got quite a list of storm sewer jobs to do, paving's coming up. We just took a load of 1,400 feet of 12-inch pipe, and we're getting ready to start a construction project on the west side through utilities. And so it doesn't take much for us to get too busy.
Right.
And so this just, the two guys, the two TFTs we had in the past helped augment what we had for workforce.
And so this will be a full-time position?
As opposed to two temporary positions.
Temporary part-time, so.
Yes.
This really wasn't budgeted for, except for the fact that you are trying to alleviate the two part-time positions?
Yes, it wasn't budgeted for as one person, but the money's there. It, it almost came out like, we was like $144 off when we did the math doing a TFT as opposed, or two TFTs as opposed to hiring a regular full-time employee. And that's benefits and everything. And so it was the first thing we did was to make sure that our budget could handle. And so it can, and as I said in my email, it also leaves room to hire two seasonal, part-time employees to mow grass in the heart of the summer. And we usually hire some young people that are getting ready to go to college, just out of high school. We hire them for about two and a half, three months, and they actually help us with our mowing.
So, Pam, as I get it, you don't have intention to hire this person, is that what I just heard?
No, I don't have a problem if they need people, hiring the person. I just have a lot of questions about that.
I just want to make sure that, you know, because I'm going to move there. We approved this request to hire a full-time employee for Department of Public Works.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I just want to be sure that I wasn't overreacting.
Yeah.
I think she wanted to table. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
Well, I mean, I would like to, if it's not a problem. It would disgust us.
She already motioned, had a motion out there. I'm, I think that's what you said in the very beginning.
I just thought it would be better before we hire people.
That she wanted to table.
That's what she didn't want to do.
Yeah. I mean, I think it would be better. I would like to get some questions answered before we keep hiring people or.
So, did you make a motion in the beginning or not? I'm sorry. Sandy, did you?
She made a request.
A request, okay.
To table it until after the work session, so she could have some questions answered.
Yeah, I made the motion to do, to table it.
Okay, so I'm confused. Do we have two motions out here or just?
Okay, Darla, it's time for you.
Well, somebody seconded a motion, but I'm not sure what motion was being seconded.
I'm going to second the approval of the position.
Okay, so I, uh, okay, so I think a motion to table takes precedent. I'm thinking back to Robert's Rules of Order. I think a motion to table takes precedence. So there's a motion on the table now to table it, so is there a second to that motion? And if not, we go back to the other motion.
Is there a second? I'll make the second. So we'll vote on the table first, or only. If it passes, then we table. If we don't, we'll go back to Scott's motion. Is that correct, Darla?
Yes.
On the table, before we vote. On this, is there a way to modify that one of the votes? Because I want to, Pam, if we have in the vote that we approve this and that Mike presents and answers your questions at a work session, would that alleviate your concern for getting this person, or would you still prefer to table it?
We discussed the session.
Okay, so that would be noted.
I, I will say when it comes to Department of Public Works, I know there was some interest in if we were even supposed to have a Department of Public Works. And we looked at the minutes, what it was voted on in 2018. And during that time, we had made a proposal. We, um, we proposed and said that there would be cost savings associated with that Department of Public Works formation, both in manpower and equipment. And I think the minutes also said that I owe you a report at the end of 2019, which we haven't given you yet. But after looking at our proposal, everything we proposed has happened. And so, as I've told several board members before, the Department of Public Works has been formed. So if any time in the future, you don't think it's what we should be doing, or if there's a great outcry that it should have never happened, let's say, we've put together the Department of Public Works so it can be deconstructed in the future without hardly any grief or work. I mean, we really put it together so it can be taken apart, because we knew there was some concern when we first put it together. But everything we've proposed that we would say has come about, and there's future savings to be had when it comes to capital equipment. And so I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I'm, I just, I'm neutral about what happens here right now. But I'm just saying that I, I think our proposal was, has worked out really well, so.
I guess I'm just a little confused, because you and I had had that discussion last August. Do you remember when we were riding around?
Yes.
And remember, I said, "Had it not been voted on," because I don't remember it, and you said it hadn't. And I said, "I think it shouldn't." You agreed with me. You and I had discussed this.
I probably misspoke, and so.
So that's where the confusion at, because.
Well, it was voted on.
I relied on you when you told me it had been voted on.
Well, and I apologize for that. I, I make mistakes.
And then William had requested that information, so I.
I withdraw that, though. That request, she answered the question.
I mean, you requested some.
Oh, yes.
Are you, I, anyway, I sent out the minutes today when this was, that he's referring to. William had had questions, so I sent it to him, and since he had questions, I'll send it to everybody, because most of you weren't here at the time, so.
Hey, and I'd just like to say about what we discussed. When I sent out the emails to try to give you a heads up on what we were going to do tonight, I had mentioned the Department of Public Works several times. And so I had forgot, we had that conversation, and I assumed that the Department of Public Works is pretty much taken for granted at this time, so I apologize for that.
If you recall, the 2018 vote was to have a trial year of 2019. Is that the way you remembered, Scott?
I didn't think it was necessarily trial year. We were going forward with it, and then there would be a report due at the beginning of 2020. So I don't know that the trial year was.
I'm not sure trial's where I work, but.
There was an original motion, I believe, that said a trial year, but then that motion was modified. If I recall correctly, to just.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at the minutes. I've been busy all day.
Yeah, I understand.
And I think that's part of the confusion. I think with Pam's request, and I have a couple questions, too. Well, first, I have nothing against this employee that we're trying to hire or anything.
I understand.
The fact that we tabled this, does it jeopardize losing this employee? Or you stated that he's already working, he'll still continue to work for two weeks or?
Well, the reason we're moving on this now is he's about to go back, get called back to work. And so we thought we'd put this to bed early, so he didn't have any trepidation about hanging around. He's got a family to feed, and so we were just putting this to bed early as opposed to waiting till the last minute. So I, I can't tell you the date he's supposed to go back to work, but it was a conversation. And just for the record, as the email says, this was, um, both the supervisors from Street Department and Utilities think it's a good idea. They, they like the employee, and it's not something I construed by myself. I mean, it's, it's actually, I was asked if this would not be a good idea. And so I, I support, I support what's been brought to me, which we depend on our supervisors to help us figure out things.
Okay, I will, I'll withdraw the motion. We can go ahead and vote on hiring him. And then in our work session Monday, discuss it further.
That's fine, and even before that, if you like, so I can get you prepared for the work session. I think we can answer almost any question you have about it, and I think you'll be happy about the answers.
Okay.
Alright, I withdraw the second, and we go back to Scott and Trevor's motion now. Any comment or concerns with that? Seeing none, Sandy?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright. Request to transfer a volunteer firefighter to part-time. Mike?
Hey.
What I like to do is, uh, two things really, is to transfer a volunteer firefighter to part-time. His name is Ryan Purcell. He recently completed all of his firefighter training, as well as being an EMT. He is currently enrolled in Ivy Tech for the Homeland Security. He is going for fire science, and he is scheduled to graduate in May. And this is his career objective. This is the style that we think is the future of people coming onto the department in this, uh, in this format. This is not a new position. These are just positions that need to be filled within our part-time status. We have six, what we call full-time equivalent and part-time, and it takes several people to do that. And Ryan Purcell is, already went through the testing interviews for the volunteer system. So we'd like to see him transferred to part-time at the maximum rate of 1250 an hour. That's the first request.
Okay. Is there a motion for the transfer of the volunteer fireman to part-time?
I make a motion to transfer the volunteer fire department to part-time.
I'll second.
Any council comment, question? Any public comment, question? And I do apologize, I did not allow public comment for the first one. I actually just forgot, so I apologize on that. Sandy, roll call, please.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second one is, is an outside person who previously was with our fire department. His name is Ron Van Deelander. He is trained, he's experienced, abundant some knowledge, and he is now available to come to work for us on a part-time basis. And he would be an asset to our community. And unlike the, since he's not a transfer, he's just an outright hire from the outside world to the part-time. Ron Van Deelander.
So, the first one was a request to hire two full-time, right?
Yes, and I was explaining in the email over the weekend that that was an error. We are not hiring two full-time people right now. That'll probably come on March 9th, so.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's right.
Alright, is there a motion?
Second.
I'll second it. Any council comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Sandy?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And so it says, Lord, on the agenda, we are in the process of internally seeking applicants for the two full-time positions, one replacing Jason Webb, and the other one is a new position that was budgeted for this year. We are going through the process right now that, so again, we'll bring it to you more than likely March 9th, so. With consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, at this time, we'd open up privilege of the floor. Anyone have any comments for us on non-adjunct items? Seeing none, we'll go to supervisors' comments.
I'll start. First of all, thanks, Shanna, for joining the crew with Parks and Rec. I've asked for work sessions to be held to talk about some of my concerns and things I want to do in 2020. Parks and Recs is right on top of the list, that and annexation. So I sent an email out to department heads and the town board, and I think this is the year that we really should work hard at getting some things done that we want to do for the town. The town is very active right now, whether it's commercial, residential, improvements to our park and rec system. We've got a couple grants hanging out there. Hopefully, we're going to capture a trail grant. And I just want to make sure the hire that we just approved, I want to make sure that the board gives me and the rest of the department heads a direction and make sure we're all on the same page, and we serve at your pleasure. So we need to know your pleasure and your direction, so we can make this a really productive year. I think this is going to be a big year for Ellisville, and I think we need to work real hard, and it's probably going to be, bring your lunch to the work session, so.
Yeah, I think there's been a lot of topics been suggested to me, so I do expect these work sessions to be rather long and lengthy, and, which is great. I mean, there's a lot of things that we need to work out, and so we're all on the same page, so.
And I think the board needs to, when they have time, because you're not always going to be able to be at every work session, everybody. So I think when you have time during the day, or even after hours, Saturdays, whenever. So I think when you have time during the day, or even after hours, Saturdays, whenever, you need to get a hold of us, especially me, and, and tell me what you need to know, so we can prepare you and you can give us direction.
It's a great idea.
Thanks again, Shanna.
Anyone else, supervisor?
Yeah, I too want to thank Shanna for volunteering to be on the Parks Board. It's more involved than you think, so you'll, but you'll have fun at it. We appreciate that. Just to keep you updated, of course, I told you last meeting that we lost an officer to the Indiana Gaming Commission. I gave him his separation letter today. He'll be done with us February twenty-third. I opened his position up today, closing next Monday. We'll interview you next week from Thursday. And I should have the candidate for your approval for his position Monday night to twenty-fourth. So we're moving right along on that. We're also working on, at that point then, we'll have an opening for a full-time officer at that time. We're working on how to work that out now, too. We're not sure how that's going to go out right now, so. Appreciate your support on it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one more thing.
Sure.
Very important. I'm on the Elletsville Council for you, Boys and Girls Club, the Boys and Girls Club. The Big Hearts Campaign is on. This is a campaign to help fund the Boys and Girls Club and make sure over four hundred members of the Boys and Girls Club has the access to everything they can offer children. Our Big Hearts Campaign allows kids and their families to join for twenty dollars and, and be a member of the Boys and Girls Club. This is, is not a babysitting operation. This is a place that builds character and, and future citizens for our town. And it helps single families and people that need the after-school care. And, and the Boys and Girls Club's a wonderful addition to our community. So Big Hearts Campaign's on. If you want to know about it, give me a call. We will be coming around, talking to everybody about donations and helping to support the Boys and Girls Club. So it's on, and it goes to the end of April, and so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I remember the Boys Club back when I was a kid, many, many years ago. It was on Lincoln Street, I think. Used to go in there a lot after school, and they had boxing and all kinds of things for us to do. And it was a great morale builder, and I, it's a wonderful thing you're doing.
Proof positive, President of Town Board, right there.
Or maybe I got hit in the head too many times, boxing, who knows? All right, let's move to council comments. Anyone?
I would just like to thank CAPS for doing this week in, week out, and providing the makeup and everything for the town council, so we can look good on camera. But other than that, I think we're good.
To have to put up with us.
Yes, exactly.
Well, say it was makeup, you'd better get your money back.
And I would also like to thank Shanna.
It's great that you're doing this again, so, thank you. Pam, did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought I heard you say something.
Nope.
Sorry.
Why did I mic?
Oh, any other council comment? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need to adjourn.